I will now call to order the meeting of the Omaha Planning Board. Planning Board members that are here today are Trent Magid, David Rosacker, Michael Pate, Jeff Moore, Patrick Morris, and I am Christine Carnes, Vice Chair. Members of the city staff that are in attendance today are Dave Fanslaw, Planning Director, Eric England, Acting Assistant Planning Director, Mike Carter, Acting Current Planning Manager, Robert LaRocco, Planning Board Administrator, Jennifer Taylor from the City Law Department, and Lisa Agins, Recording Secretary. Our rules of procedure are as follows. Notice of this hearing has been published. Copies of today's agenda are located on the table in front of us. You are welcome to come down and pick one up. The cases on the consent agenda will be heard first. Consent cases are perceived by the Planning Board to be non-controversial, have already been heard, or have been recommended for layover, and therefore will be read and voted on without the opportunity for your testimony. If you wish to testify, you may remove the case from the consent agenda. When each consent case is read, I will ask if anyone wants the case removed. If you do, please stand up and say so, and the case will be removed. This case will then be heard in the order in which it appears on the regular agenda after we go through the consent cases. When the case is heard, you will have the opportunity to come to the podium, clearly state your name and address, and give your testimony at that time. When hearing cases on the regular agenda, the Board will first hear from the applicant, and after the applicant states their case, we will hear from the proponents, and then we will hear from the opponents. After both sides are heard, the public hearing will be closed, and no additional testimony will be permitted unless a Board member requests additional information. When at the podium, please clearly state your name, address, and whom you are representing for the record. Your testimony is very important to us. In the interest of time and courtesy to others, please be short and to the point. We will try to limit each case to 10 minutes. Those directly involved in the case, please speak first. We request that large groups select a spokesperson to represent that group, therefore eliminating repetitive testimony. When giving testimony, please provide new information and try not to repeat what has been previously said. We do ask that all speakers and others be treated with courtesy and with respect. In that regard, please remain silent while seated, and please turn off your cell phones. Our decision to approve, deny, or continue a case made here today will be forwarded to the City Council for another public hearing and final disposition by the City Council. Conditional use permits are an exception to this rule. The Board's decision made here today on conditional use permits are final and not forwarded to the City Council. Lastly, upon the advice of the Law Department, all communications to the Board members from attorneys or other interested parties should be transmitted through the Planning Department so that they are made a part of the public record. The Department will then transmit all that information to the Board as well as to the rest of the public. Rezoning matters are an exception to this rule. A current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act can be found in a white binder on the east wall of this room. And we will start on the first consent case. Agenda item number six, case C-10-18-247, C-12-18-248. The applicant is Blondo 180 LLC, on consent for approval. The request is revised preliminary plat and final plat approval of Blue Stem Meadows, lots 1 through 109, outlots A through G, a subdivision located outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR, R4, and MU. This was laid over from our July 3, 2019, meeting. The location is northwest of 180th and Blondo Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 10, case C-8-19-126. The applicant is Sandra Delgado, on consent for approval. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow daycare services general in the R4 district. This was laid over from our July 3, 2019, meeting. The location is 5815 and 5819 South 14th Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 13, case C-10-19-141, C-12-19-142. The applicant is Mark Lampy, on consent for approval. The request is preliminary plat approval of Gold Meadows, a subdivision inside the city limits with rezoning from R435 to DR, R4, and R5. The location is northwest of 50th and Bancroft Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 14, case C-12-19-144. The applicant is S&amp;B Properties LLC, it's on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Harvey Industrial Park Replat 1, a minor plat inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage, and the location is 4420 South 67th Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 15, case C-12-19-145. The applicant is Thompson, Dreeson, and Dorner, Inc., it's on for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Hanscom Place Replat 16, a minor plat inside the city limits. The location is 1719 Park Avenue. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 16, case C-10-19-146, C-12-19-147. The applicant is Spire Foundation LLC, on consent for layover. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Spire Club at Pacific Reserve, a minor plat outside the city limits with rezoning from R5 to DR. The location is 1110, I'm sorry, 1110, 1116, 1119, and 1125, South 206th Circle. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 17, case number C-10-19-148, C-12-19-149. The applicant is Fairway Stores, Inc., on consent for approval. The request is preliminary and final plat approval of Marvellie, a minor plat inside the city limits with a waiver of Section 5384D lot frontage along with rezoning from LC to DR and LC, and approval of the MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. The location is northeast of 132nd and Ford Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from consent? Seeing none. Agenda item number 18, case C-10-19-160. The applicant is Nancy Mammel, it's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from HI to CBD. Property is located within an ACI-1 overlay district. The location, 1018 South 10th Street. Would anyone like to see this removed? Seeing none. Agenda item number 19, case C-10-19-152. The applicant is John Ackerman, it's on consent for approval. The request is rezoning from R435 to R6 with approval of the MCC, Major Commercial Corridor Overlay District. The location is 4660 L Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 21, case C-8-19-157, C-10-19-164. The applicant is Schreier Automotive, Inc., on consent for approval. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow automotive sales in a CC district with approval of the ACI-3, Area of Civic Importance Overlay District. The location is 601 North 108th Circle. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 22, case C-8-19-158. The applicant is Spire Foundation LLC, on consent for layover. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow outdoor sports and recreation in a DR district. The location, 1110, 1116, 1119, 1125, South 206th Circle. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 23, case C-8-19-159. The applicant is Robert Patterson, it's on consent for layover. The request is approval of a special use permit to allow daycare services general in an R4 district. The location is 4768 Q Street. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 24, case C-7-19-154. The applicant is Jeremy Madsen for Douglas County School District 001, on consent for approval. The request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow secondary education facilities in an R5 district with a waiver of Section 55206 height to allow a 52-foot tall structure. The location is northwest of 156th and Ida Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Agenda item number 25, case C-7-19-155. The applicant is Spire Foundation LLC, on consent for approval. The request is approval of a conditional use permit to allow daycare services general in an R6 district, and the location is northeast of 165th and Pinckney Streets. Would anyone like to see this removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none. Those are all of the cases on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for disposition?
I'd like to motion to, for approval of case number 6, 10, 13, 14, 15, 17, 18, 19, 21, 24, and 25. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote? Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes, but I'm going to recuse myself for number 21, and, and number 18.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved, six to zero. Do I have a motion for the layover cases?
Motion to layover cases 16, 22, and 23.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote? Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay. All right, so now we'll move to the, well, let me just say this. If you had a case that was on the consent agenda, those cases have now been disposed of, and you are free to leave. You're also free to stay if you prefer, but we will not be discussing your case today. So, those cases are finished, and you may go. We will now move to the items on the administrative meeting-only portion of the agenda. For these cases, there will be no opportunity for public testimony. Agenda item number one, case C-10-18-039, C-12-18-040. The applicant is All Holy Spirit Greek Orthodox Church. The request is the final plat approval of Everett Place, lots 1 through 4, outlots A through F, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to DR and R5. This was laid over from the April 3, 2019, meeting. The location is 450 South 193rd Plaza, northwest of 192nd and Grayfawn Plaza. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so this is the first phase of Everett Place. Four lots, six outlots. There's a fifth residential, or future lot for civic use that will come at a later date. This is for lots 1 through 4 and outlots A through F. The applicant has submitted revised final plat plans, adding an outlot along 192nd Street for future right-of-way acquisition purposes, a wetland delineation and mitigation report, and an updated tree canopy analysis and mitigation plan. Staff recommends approval of the final plat for Everett Place, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding to City Council.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board? If none, may I please have a motion?
A motion for approval of the final plat for Everett Place, lots 1 through 4 and outlots A through F, subject to submission of an acceptable final subdivision agreement prior to forwarding the request to City Council for final action.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote? Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Agenda item number two, case C-10-18-166, C-12-18-167. The applicant is Creche Development. The request is a final plat approval of Legend Trails, lots 1 through 86, outlots A through L, a subdivision outside the city limits along with rezoning from AG to DR, laid over from the June 5, 2019, meeting, and the location is northwest of 222nd and Q Streets. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so the revised preliminary plat for Legend Trails was approved by City Council along with subdivision waivers for street width, curbing gutters, sidewalks, and lot frontage back on July 30, just about a week ago. This is for the final plat of the entire project. The applicant has submitted additional information, including a slopes analysis and final wetland delineation report to address the conditions of the revised preliminary plat and the previous reason for the layover of the final plat. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to DR, and approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions being addressed in the recommendation report prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board? Seeing none. May I hear a motion, please?
Motion to approve rezoning from AG to DR, and approval of the final plat, subject to the two conditions prior to forwarding to the request to City Council.
Second.
Lisa, if we have a motion and a second, would you please call the roll? Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Okay, agenda item number three, case C-3-19-114. This is, the applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of the 2020 to 2025 Capital Improvements Program. This was laid over from the July 3, 2019, meeting. The location is Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. Can we hear from the city, please?
Hi, I am Kevin Carter. I am a city planner in the long-range planning section of the Planning Department. So, as you all know, the six-year capital improvement program is annually updated. It is our schedule of major infrastructure projects, including streets, sewers, parks, major equipment, and other public facilities over the next six years. And the process of updating the CIP coincides with the update of the city's annual budget. It kicks off in January. It involves dozens of staff members from different city departments coordinating together to come to a balanced six-year program. And I wanted to mention that the process this year included additional opportunity for the City Council to provide some input and ask questions during the annual budget hearings that recently took place. And I also would want everyone in the room to know that the annual public hearing on the budget, August 13, at 6:30 PM, will include discussion of the CIP as well. I think the, you have a summary of the new projects. The CIP this year includes an appendix that lists all the changes from the CIP from the previous year for everyone's benefit, if they would like to look at that. And the Planning Department staff, we recommend approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Now that we've heard from the applicant, do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, just to reiterate a little bit what Kevin said, the Planning Department's role is to review each request for compliance with the master plan, and that is what the Planning Board's responsibility as well, which the CIP does. So, we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from the Board?
Number of approval of the 2020, 2025 Capital Improvement Program?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call the roll? Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Thank you. Agenda item number four, case C-3-19-116. The applicant is Michael Sands. The request is approval of the 6121 Maple Tiff Redevelopment Project Plan, laid over from the July 3, 2019, meeting. The location is 6121 Maple Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. This project is fundamentally the same as it was at the July Planning Board meeting, where it was laid over. It's a rehab of a one-story retail building on Maple and 62nd Street in the middle of downtown Benson. It's an older building in poor condition that has been vacant for about two years. The rehab of the building is a $1,690,000 project. The applicants are asking for $241,000 in Tiff support. They'll also build a second-floor bar and patio space as part of the rehab. It was laid over because of questions at the last meeting regarding parking, the windows on a neighboring zero-lot line building, and questions about additional outreach to neighbors in the neighborhood. Parking is not required for this building because of its NBD zoning. However, the applicants are actively working on trying to provide their own parking for their, for their tenant and their project within a block, block and a half of the project. And this would be new parking. It wouldn't take away from existing parking that's available for public use. The zero-lot line windows, our chief building official has looked at that. None of those windows are required by the building code for egress, so they would not prevent the city from issuing a building permit for the second-floor addition of this building. And the owners have reached out to the adjoining property owner, sending a certified letter, and to the Neighborhood Association. They'll be meeting with the Neighborhood Association later this month. The project meets the criteria for the city's Tiff program, some appropriate land use for the area, and complies with the city's master plan, and we ask for your approval.
Thank you. Now that we've heard from the applicant, do we have any other proponents?
Michael Sands, 1700 Fornum, Fornum Street, Suite 1500. I'm here on behalf of the developer. The develop, one of the developer group is in the audience as well, Ryan Miller, so he can answer any questions that you might have specific to those details. I won't belabor the point, but as Don said, since the last hearing, I believe we have addressed all the issues and concerns and questions that were, that were raised by the Board and the members of the Neighborhood Association, determining that the building permit will be allowed for the second story, notifying the adjacent property owner, making contact with the Neighborhood Association, and meeting with them later on in the month, and addressing the Neighborhood Association's concerns regarding parking. So, with that, we're happy to answer any questions that you may have, either Ryan or I, and we respectfully ask for your recommendation. Thank you.
Hey, Michael. What is the parking situation now? I know you're in, either in negotiations. Where and what's the length of the contract that you're looking to sign for that parking?
Right. So, there are two options that they're exploring. I know Ryan, the developer, doesn't necessarily want to disclose the exact locations at this time, but they are within a couple of block radius. I do not know the length that is being discussed. Fifteen years, so the length of the Tiff. What I can say is that, one, is a near certainty, but if that were to fall through, he does have a contingency in place that is under a letter of intent that is also a certainty.
How many parking stalls?
Have. The second option has 60, or would have approximately 60. The more likely option, I think, probably exceeds that, around that or exceeds that. So, it has been determined that that would, you know, more than assist in parking for their, their desired use for those, those events.
Would that be just for your, just for that business, or would that be shared parking for any other business with the options that you have?
It would just be, very likely it'd just be for the events, is most likely what it's going to be. It's going to be on an event basis, would be the contract with the, with the owner.
Okay, thank you, Michael.
I think you can tell. We've had quite a bit of discussion with regards to the parking there, obviously, because if you do have events, I don't know how many you expect to have, or what capacity that will be, but if there's 200 people there. The concern is, will parking bleed into the neighborhoods?
Right.
And so, we want to make sure that you're addressing that issue. But second of all, have you heard anything from the neighbors, or have you had any discussion at all with the neighbors with regards to what this is going to be?
The adjacent property owners or the neighborhood?
No, anybody in the neighborhood there.
We, we have made contact with them. The soonest time that they had available to come speak to the Neighborhood Association was later in August, and we accepted that invitation. I know Ryan is familiar with the president of the Neighborhood Association, and actually talked to her this morning. She voiced that she personally has no opposition to the neighbor, or to the project, and that officially the Neighborhood Association does not present any opposition to the project, but there might be individuals within the Board or the Association that have their own ideas.
Okay. And this is the Tiff request, obviously, but there's some questions, obviously, that come along with that. So, the Tiff request is $241,000, which I assume most of that is going to be used for the acquisition of the property. You're not going to really have many public improvements to be made, right?
Well, there, there will be a number of Tiff-eligible costs, the cost of redevelop, redeveloping and gutting the existing building. But it does not include the cost to put the second story on.
It does not.
Correct. But there's expenses or costs far in excess of the ask, and even aside from the, from the acquisition cost.
Yeah, what's your estimated budget, $1,007,000 roughly?
Yeah, 1.688 is the budget.
Thank you.
Thanks. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to speak? Okay, are there any opponents who wish to speak?
Thanks for taking the time. My name is Erin Feigstinger. I live at 2719 North 49th Avenue, Omaha 68104. I am here as a resident of the Benson neighborhood, though I am also a member of the Benson Neighborhood Association Board. One of those people Mr. Sands has referred to as someone with my own personal opinions, I suppose. I'm here to voice some concerns about this project. I do want to make a note that as a Board, we have not yet decided if we support or do not support this plan. We're waiting to see what your decision is, and if it moves forward to City Council, what our stance will be. So, I just want to clarify that. First, there's a lack of transparency about what this project is. At the July meeting, the applicant twice stated that this is not a bar in response to concerns raised about the proliferation of bars in our neighborhoods. And I'm a young person, I should be the one that likes those things, right? And the quintessential one we all hear about in the newspaper. Though the project application states under proposed use and project details that, quote, "The second floor is designed to serve as a full-scale, full-scale restaurant and bar space open to the public." Second, in regards to what was referred to in the last meeting as some of those neighborly Second, in regards to what was referred to in the last meeting as some of those neighborly things, which are a critical concern to us. I know that the applicant has contacted our Neighborhood Association in effort that we appreciate, if even in hindsight, and will be presenting this project at the August twenty-sixth meeting. I would ask that you lay over this decision until after that meeting, since Omaha's master plan states that Omaha's plans must accurately reflect the community's desires, resulting in a clear direction for Omaha's future and rapid approval of proposals which follow those plans. I appreciate your time and your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you.
I've got a question.
You're still up there.
I know, and I said I'd be happy to answer them, so here I am.
Information. You know, obviously, I've been to Benson a number of times. Has there been any talk among the association and the members about parking garages? And I know that people have tried in the past, and you live there, right? So, you could walk to all these places, right?
I mean, it's a bit of a hike, given our recent weather, but, yeah.
But obviously, people park on every street and every house and wherever they can.
It goes pretty far into the neighborhood on Friday, Saturday.
Before you get autonomous, autonomous-driving cars and flying cars and stuff like that. Do you see any parking garages being built in that area?
I know we have one parking garage that's not in use. I believe it's called Larkens Parking, which is very clever. But I don't know where we would.
Have you tried to build in the past? Have you tried to build some?
I don't know where we would put a parking lot within a couple of blocks radius of the downtown strip. And I also wonder what benefit it adds to the neighborhood to have a parking lot that only exists for events, for events that may happen on weekends.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents who wish to speak?
Good afternoon. Thanks for having me. My name is Mark Brannon. I live at sixty-nine fifteen Evans Street, Omaha, Nebraska, six eight one zero four. I'd also be willing to answer any questions after I speak, specifically to parking or anything else in the neighborhood. I also am a member of the Board of Benson Neighborhood Association. But again, I'm speaking here on behalf of myself, because as Erin mentioned, as a board, we have not come to the conclusion, a conclusion on this project to support or not, because we aren't fully informed on it. I came here today to convince you that the project is not deserving of tax increment financing. I accept the fact that this project meets the minimum requirements for the Nebraska Community Development Law, the city's Tiff program, as well as certain elements of the master plan. However, I intend to demonstrate that this project is not deserving of subsidy in the form of Tiff, and at the very least, the items should be laid over until some neighborhood concerns are addressed. My first argument centers on the fact that the applicant has created the conditions in which they cite as evidence for reason to award them Tiff. Their application states that the building has sat vacant for over two years. The interior of the building is an uninhabitable shell with no working plumbing, electrical, heating, or air conditioning. This statement would lead you to believe that this building was in such bad shape that the costs associated with rehabilitation necessitated the use of tax increment financing. The fact of the matter, however, is that this is a structurally sound building that was in perfectly good condition upon purchase and was gutted by the current owner. Secondly, this applicant claims that the project is not financially feasible without the use of Tiff, which may be the case as the project is currently proposed. But the majority of the costs associated with this project are associated with the buildout of the second story. It seems that without the use of Tiff, the applicant could move forward with the events space on the first floor, and in doing so, generate additional revenue for taxing entities. The question for you to decide is, if you were to deny this application, would this site not generate additional tax revenue for taxing entities? Do you believe that the applicant would continue to pay eighty-four hundred dollars per year in property taxes, not to mention insurance and interest, and let the site sit vacant on a prime neighborhood business district? It seems more logical to me that they would shift their plans and pursue a business plan that worked without public subsidy. In fact, when I met with Ryan Miller two nights ago, and I appreciate him meeting with me, reaching out as an individual to try and allay my fears of this project or my concerns about this project, he informed me that they were prepared to move on to Plan B if their Tiff application was denied. This demonstrates the abuse of Tiff that is all too common in our city. Developers holding you hostage by claiming that but for this money, the property that they have already invested in deeply would sit vacant. I'm not comfortable with this project moving forward until we have concrete plans for parking, while separate parking is not required for this project because of its location within a neighborhood business district. It does not seem prudent to award public financing to a project that will utilize well over a hundred parking spots. They have said that they want to host at least events up to three hundred people. In a neighborhood where homeowners rely on on-street parking and have already expressed concerns over this issue, this will have a negative impact on the residential population, and I ask you to consider this fact. And finally, in the recommendation for support, the Planning Department stated "The Benson Business District, which is developing into an attraction for Omaha residents and visitors alike, but requires considerable renovations to keep the area vibrant and hip." Well, I think the area is plenty hip enough, and ask that the city or the Planning Department or the Planning Board, whoever is responsible, to reconsider the current version of the community redevelopment map so that we can more narrowly focus the use of Tiff funds in neighborhoods that do need this redevelopment tool. It is a tool that can be used properly to spur development. And then, these are some things I came up with since the proponents spoke. But if the parking lots are within a few block radius, as they claim, this project would, in fact, go against the master plan's priority in establishing more density in neighborhood business districts like Benson, right? Because for the next fifteen years, this would be a parking lot that, as Erin stated, would be used on weekends perhaps, but that would, that could not be developed in the next fifteen years. We need more density, as stated. One more thing, Mr. Sands stated that Tiff funds would not be utilized for the second-story buildout, but I've looked at the application closely, and funds for the, I mean, they're using them for the architecture and the design, and then also, if you look more closely, the site prep and demolition, and the building renovations that are all listed as Tiff eligible costs. It doesn't break it down between the first floor and second floor, so it doesn't make it very clear as to where those funds would be going. Thanks for your time, and I'm open for any questions.
I have one question for you, Mark.
Okay.
If I could. If you had a choice, what would go there? What would you like to see go in that spot? It's a prime corner in Benson.
Sure.
Everyone's indicated that there's plenty of bars in the area. So, what would you like to see? You have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I'm just a personal citizen, so, yeah, I mean, I have had lots of thoughts. I mean, as I mentioned, we had a neighborhood visiting session over a year ago, and the businesses that were brought up by several different neighbors were businesses that we can visit during the day with our families, right? If I want to go up there with my kids right now, I can get shoes from Haney Shoes. I can arrange a funeral for my dad at Kramer Funeral Home. But there's not many other things that I can do during the day. Restaurants are there prepping for their late-night dinners, and bars are closed until... Again, what I certainly would not like to have there is something that caters to non-residents of Benson, because, you know, I don't know the percentage, but the majority of people that come to Benson during the weekend are from elsewhere in the city, right? They drive there, and that is why, as Erin stated, cars are almost, on some nights, when there's concerts, all the way to Blondo Street, right?
You can get a bounce house at Bryant-Hell.
True, very true.
How far is your house, where you live?
I live sixty-nine fifteen, so I'm nine blocks west of there. I do walk up there. I bike up there.
You ever experienced any problems?
Well, with parking?
Just with parking could be.
No, see, I'm west, just right next to Seventy-Second, so the overflow doesn't reach me down there. It does reach west for about four blocks down to, nearly to the elementary school, Benson West Elementary School. But then, the majority of people just park directly south of the business district, between sixty-fourth all the way down to Fifty-Eighth, so a half-mile stretch, and then another half-mile south. And so, and then, I kid you not, if you were to return there on a Thursday night after visiting your family with your elderly mother, and you have, and you rely on on-street parking, you could very well have to park several blocks away from your own house and then walk back. And so, anyway, I would just say, if I had a choice, I would say I would want a business there. Again, this is their business. They can put in what they want, but I wouldn't have public financing support businesses that isn't the best fit for the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, guys.
Any other opponents?
Does Ryan Miller want to rebut?
Well, let's wait and close the public hearing. We'll do that. Any other opponents? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Sands, would you like to rebut anything?
Michael Sands, seventeen hundred Farnum Street, Suite fifteen hundred. Just a few things. I won't belabor the point, but so, with respect to the parking, I think, you know, what my client is doing is he's going above and beyond what is required out of the zoning. He is, has, you know, a parking lot under contract, has a contingency plan for that parking lot if that were not to work out. And so, those are the kind of things, you know, it's not only a part of his business plan, but those are a part of things that he's trying to do to alleviate any sort of concerns or extra pressure that it has on the neighborhood. And to that point, Ryan's been very involved in Benson and the development of Benson. And as the individuals from the Neighborhood Association were talking, Ryan indicated to me that, you know, we've tried daytime stuff in Benson, and the fact of the matter is, they fail. They go out of business, and if you're starting a new business in Benson, really, the only viable option from a developer or an owner's standpoint is to do something that attracts the crowd that goes there, which makes, I mean, makes sense from a business perspective. So, I just would ask that he's not penalized for making a business decision that is in his best interest, and with him working, trying to work towards alleviating any of the pressure on the neighborhood. And with that, I'm happy to answer any more questions that you have.
I've got a couple of questions for you, if I might, here. So, can you clarify, at least for me, anyway, what the use, primary use of this property will be, and what the hours of operation will be?
Not sure on the hours of operation. The primary use is that the base level floor will be a rentable space, an event space. The top floor, and Don Seaton and I discussed this, when we initially submitted the application, it was anticipated that the top floor could be a bar and restaurant space, but what it's transitioned into, and Don and I spoke about that, there wasn't a real need to change the application because it was known to the Planning Department. The top floor will be a flex space, so it'll be used if you have larger parties that want to rent that space and do a cocktail hour or something up there, and then go down to the event space. Or in times where the spaces are rented out, it would be, it could be open to the public. It's kind of a revolving kitchen-type space where you could have chefs from the area come in and cook food.
So, and maybe Mr. Miller, I assume Mr. Miller is here. I assume that you're not going to let this building just sit idly during the day and evening and only for events, because you can only have, you may only have events maybe four times a month, right? So, is it going to be used daily?
Ryan Miller, for the project, obviously.
Address, please.
Six-two oh nine Maple Street, Omaha, Nebraska. The project overall, so our partner is Abrams Catering on this project. They're the oldest caterer in Omaha, been established nineteen fifty-two. And they're anticipating about seventy-five to eighty-five uses a year for the events, primarily, you know, evenings and Saturdays for weddings. So, the thought process for the top floor, you have a wedding, transition to a cocktail party, go downstairs for your reception or that sort of thing, or corporate events.
I'm sorry, did you say Abrams Catering?
Yeah. Is our partner. Yeah, they're the managing partner, our partner, and they manage basically the property.
And they have experience.
In the event space, yeah. So, and a little background, too, for me in the neighborhood. So, I started Benson Brewery in two thousand thirteen and sold that about a year and a half ago. We own a Russian beer garden, and, you know, as far as ties into the community, we pay, you know, over that course of time, millions of dollars of salary and wages that are mostly Benson. People that live in Benson, they're employees of ours that, you know, live in the area. So, I think that's a benefit that can't be ignored with this sort of project either, and we anticipate this will pay about another four hundred to five hundred thousand a year in wages, which will predominantly be people who live in the neighborhood. So, just so, community involvement and welcoming the community, having jobs is a viable opportunity. If they're working nights, then you have people that can spend money during the daytime. And until that happens, you're going to have failures during the day, until we get the next cycle in the neighborhood where we have density, where you have a daytime population that can actually spend money during the day, where you can go do those activities that he mentioned. But, so back to, sorry, I'm going to digress, but...
So, do you have any idea what your daily hours of operation will be?
Abrams shuts everything down by midnight. It's at midnight eleven, or later than. And then, even talking to Mark, the only news in the beer garden, we have a commercial kitchen in this space that can be utilized for someone like him who does organic farming and needs a commercial space. So, I mean, he could use that right there in the daytime and get use of it throughout the course of the day. But for us, I mean, whenever the events start to close, which is, Abrams is at eleven midnight, it would call.
So, again, I just want to make sure I'm clear. I hear you saying that it's primarily just going to be an event center, then?
It'll be an event space, but we're going to use that top floor as more of a flexible venue. So, it's not going to be rented as much upstairs, so we'll be able to do like permanent, temporary installations that last thirty-plus days, where we can do something that flexes, gets, we want to maximize the economics of the property, right?
Let me ask it a different way.
Okay.
If I worked across the street in an office and I wanted to go across the street for a sandwich and a drink at twelve-thirty, would I be able to do that?
Uh, no.
How about at five-thirty at night?
During times when we have the pop-up and the temporary venues.
If there was no event on the first floor, I mean, would I be able to do that?
You'd be able to do it on the second floor.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Any day?
With there's no events. That's kind of the goal.
So, that's a restaurant upstairs, then?
It's going to be a flex space, so we'll be able to use it for pop-up restaurant-type of events or turn it into the event venue.
I don't see that you're responsible necessarily for the parking. The zoning doesn't allow additional parking. I understand the parking concerns in the whole area. Can you address the gentleman Mark's thought about why should there be tax increment financing on this project versus just making a market right deal?
With what?
Why do you need tax increment financing to make this successful?
For this project, we can't proceed without tax increment financing. The cost to put the second story on with the structural engineering on the main floor and the structural enhancement that needs to be made and developing this project and maybe get up to code, because right now, when we took the project over, when we built it over, everything's, you know, old, not up to date. You change the use, you need to update everything, which is kind of what we have. So, if you're to rent this or use it, the cost even to develop it probably exceeds what we can get out of the financial benefit if we just build a bar.
Is your group bar deal on the building?
We own the building, yeah.
You do? You currently on the building?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Any other questions for this gentleman? All right. Thank you. I assume Mr. Sands is done with his response.
Yes, thank you, unless you have any other questions.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
May we hear from the city, please?
I'm not going to add much other than what Don had said, but it's true, the zoning, the existing zoning, which is not being changed with this application, is MBD, Neighborhood Business District, which, along with the CBD, are the two districts in our zoning code that do not require onsite parking requirements. Benson has become a vibrant community, and, you know, there are some parking challenges. Part of that, it goes along with becoming vibrant, and, you know, so, we encourage the applicant to look for any possible parking options. You know, anything they can do with sharing with other businesses in the area that could help alleviate that would also be supported. Staff recommends approval of the Tiff application.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Lisa, will you please call and roll? Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Just a comment. This is a Tiff request, and I get that, and I am generally...
Just a comment. This is a TIF request, and I get that. And I am generally a very pro-development individual, but, you know, sometimes I just have to vote with my instincts, and this just doesn't feel right for this area. I'd like to have more communicate, I would have liked to have had more communication with the neighbors, the Neighborhood Association, before we got to this point, just to know what their position would be. And that didn't happen. It's going to happen at the end of the month. So with that, I'm going to vote no.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved, five to one.
Okay, agenda item number five, we are going to take with agenda item number seven, so I will read both cases. Agenda item number five is case C3-19-137. The applicant is John Folsom. Request is approval to an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan from industrial to low-density residential laid over from the July 3, 2019 meeting. The location is northwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. Agenda item number seven is C10-19-124, C12-19-125. Again, the applicant is John Folsom, and the request is preliminary plat approval of Wounded Warriors Family Support Dunham Edition, a subdivision outside the city limits with rezoning from AG to R4, along with a request for a variance to the present development zone, PDZ, boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. This was also laid over from the July 3, 2019 meeting. The location is northwest of 120th Street and Rainwood Road. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Thank you. Adam Charleston, Hush Blackwell Law Firm, on behalf of the applicant. The address is 13330 California Street, Suite 200, Omaha, Nebraska. I'll keep this brief. We're standing on the application that we made, and this is a layover from last month. Our request essentially is a change to the city's master plan and zoning change to an R4 to allow for a development and construction of a residential long care facility for combat wounded veterans. And with your approval today, that would help us keep moving along that path. I brought here with us Colonel John Folsom, here on behalf of Wounded Warriors, the HDR team, Robert Haley, Christopher Kane, and my colleague Hal Dobbs from Hush Blackwell. I'll leave it to you all if you have any questions for me, the Colonel, or the engineering folks on this project.
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to speak?
John Folsom, 1719 North 60th Street in Omaha, 68104. This is, we're proposing would be the only facility like this in the United States of America. A number of months ago, this was rattling through my head, and I happened to speak with a, at the Omaha Press Club with the former chief of staff of the Veterans Administration Hospital. I outlined my vision for what you have in front of you. And the word he used was brilliant. So I do come up with good ideas once in a while. What this will do is, we have, what I look at as a mission statement, you know, situation, and I've served two tours in Iraq and Afghanistan, and will tell you that the scourge of the IEDs, IED war, has adversely affected many, many veterans who, because of IED concussions, although they're protected in many cases by up-armored vehicles from kinetic effects of shrapnel, are still adversely affected with concussive forces that have, in many cases, caused these young men, mostly, to have moderate to severe traumatic brain injuries. My inspiration was meeting a young soldier several years ago who I served with in Iraq. He's with the 2nd Infantry Division Army, and a young man who, during a clearing operation in Ramadi, poked his head through a doorway. There was an IED hit that was laid, placed head high to his left. It detonated. This young man can't do anything for himself anymore. Now, he's not in a vegetative state, but his, because of what happened to his brain, he is no longer able to do any of those things that we take for granted. He can't even wipe his bottom. He can't feed himself. He can't dress himself. And his primary caregiver is his mother. What I'm looking at in the future is when we have a lot of single soldiers whose primary caregivers are mothers, at some point, they're going to age out. They're no longer going to be able to take care of their young men or young women who were left in this state in combat. And unless we build this, the alternative for those young soldiers will be to be placed in an assisted care facility. Our vision is to build this in Omaha, and not just because we're based here, but if you look at a map of the United States, Omaha is about dead center, taking the contiguous 48 states. We have a great airport. We have great facilities here. And we envision that this is not going to be necessarily for Nebraska combat. We see this truly as a national program where we will, when we're ready, we're going to put out a national call for applicants. 24-bed initially, Hal's been my mentor on this. He said, hey, this is just phase one. So I think what we're going to be able to do is put a chip on the table for the American people. And that's our vision. And I hope that you understand what we're trying to do, and I sincerely ask for your approval. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
My name's Don Volte. My wife and I are...
Can I get your address, please?
Yeah, 12640 Rainwood Road and 12810 Rainwood Road. We're next door.
Thank you.
We're west. So we're literally an Adrian Martinez pass away from their, or less, a tree row. I would also like to say that I have not been asked to come today. I have visited with John in the past, but this in no way was a request, nor did I review anything I was going to say with them beforehand. I'm a 1971 Benson High School graduate. My wife's a Westside Warrior graduate. I'm a University of Nebraska civil engineering graduate. Took some city planning courses along the way. I would also just say, I'm also presently the chairman of the University of Nebraska Engineering Advisory Board, and my wife is on the board of the University of Nebraska Medical Center Hospital Board here in Omaha. We graduated during a recession. We couldn't get a job in Nebraska, so we went out and tried our trade around the world. And 43 years later, we've come back home to build a house and do our business. So we bought some land out west of their plat. What we'd like to say is two things here today is, number one, we looked for two years for the proper place to build and to buy land and things like this. We think that this land out there is very special. It, we know all of our neighbors, probably a mile around, two miles around, talk to them. We think it's a last great place for soybean and corn agriculture business. The soil's very rich. It's great equestrian area, and the residents that are there are not interested in selling to commercial or industrial. We think this change in subdivision to a low-density residential, although most people out there, I think I can say, are not in the spirit of any development, which is kind of normal. I guess you hear that a lot. We think that what the work that HDR did in conjunction with the Wounded Warrior Family Support Project is very minimal. It also is very, very inclined to a height, elevation, everything that fits into the theory out there. So if we're going to build anything, we certainly would support this as a neighborhood, or at least for us, who own the 80 acres just west, is very supportive of this project. With that, I will also say that, the second thing I'd like to just say, and there's really not a proper form, except that this is a change. It's about the city master planning. I understand how master plans get built. I understand how often they're reviewed or not reviewed. I would just say that respectfully, my wife and I, and I think the neighborhood, I can speak on behalf of them, to have a master plan calling for this whole area to be industrial someday between Blair High Road and Bennington, we're right in between. Yeah, we understand it's going to be commercial on Blair High Road. The utilities are there. It's a major four-lane road, divided highway. But when you move west of that, there's nothing there that's industrial or pretends to be industrial, all the way out to the city of Bennington. And when you take a look at all the aspects of why you would classify something for a city economic development plan that would be industrial to supply support with Blair on the north and Irvington kind of on the southeast, looking at it, the little bit I know about businesses and running businesses and what's out there right now, I would just respectfully request that someday you take another look at that area. I think the use of it, since the master plan was developed and approved, should take another look at what that land's really best for and who's there and what the residences are there for. So with that, I just wanted to clear the air that somebody quoted us in a newspaper or some type of a blog that we were against this project. We are not. We certainly think the world of these fellows and people that have protected our freedom. And we'd just say that we think this industrial classification is really something that ought to be reviewed again for that three-mile section between Bennington and Blair High Road. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Hal Dobbs, 314 North 97th Court. It's nice to see you all again. This is a passion of mine to see this project because it has not only a singular national implication, but Omaha's grown up, as you all know, you helped it get there, as the center of healthcare, one of those MECA's, if you will, in the country. And so this connects so very well. This particular facility, its potential growth as a much larger set of facilities, and all the special healthcare that's in Omaha, hospitals and in rehab, make this an ideal location. So we looked around the country to decide where to start this idea. And we looked around Omaha, and we saw this piece of property. And I think by and large, it felt right. There's a little place called the Police Fire Training Center. If you look at a map, right over there. And so there's a little bit of difficulty in terms of using, as was just said, the industrial idea of what was reserved to be that kind of space years ago in the planning of the master plan. I think that configuration has changed. There are now wonderful five-acre and family horse-owning residential properties on one side, and I think there's another 80 on the other side that could well be in that space. But I doubt it will ever progress as far north industrially, at least right in that one area. So we think it's ideal. It's quiet. We're going to be rather non-intrusive. When we get all done, you'll hardly know we're there, but it's going to provide wonderful service and a great reputation for our city. And we want to thank the planning department who's worked so very diligently on this project and helped us sort of massage it a bit to fit. We started out with 10 acres, and now we've got 80. So it's really been a helpful project all the way along. And we want to thank HDR for the work that they've done. Our board is very proud of the work we do. We're just approaching the $5 million headquarters here in Omaha, Wounded Warrior Family Support. And we have a Morningstar, five-star rating, one of the five in the country, of hundreds of 501(c)(3)'s that have veterans' interests. So we're very proud of the work we do and do a lot more, if you go to the website, than just this project. But this one will become well-known, we hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Can we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so I'll touch on a few items with both agenda items number five and seven. I guess first specifically to number five with the proposed land use amendment. The applicant has submitted analysis in ways that can support this master plan change from industrial to low-density residential, and staff is in agreement with that assessment. Don had mentioned that, you know, the need to consider and to analyze the master plan, and staff is always doing that. And perhaps more industrial use along Blair High Road as it goes further north is more appropriate. This is a ways off to the west. So we haven't made wholesale changes in this area to the master plan recently, but we are constantly looking at that. And we believe that this is a good fit for low-density residential. Specifically for items number seven, you know, I could say that this has been a long process. We have met with the development team for several months. We're going back to last, early last year. And, you know, we're definitely glad that we can be able to get to a point where we can recommend approval. It's a great project to be able to provide this type of housing for, you know, military veterans that have been wounded is absolutely a great cause. So we are glad that we were able to get there. And, you know, the development is, they're asking for, with the preliminary plat and the rezoning from AG to R4, there's also a request for a variance to the present development zone. This site is just outside the present development zone. With this project, they will be required to extend the sanitary sewer from Blair High Road, which is at a great expense, which will be able to open up this area for future development. So with that extension of the sanitary sewer and along with the street networks that they're proposing to put in, which are compliant with the master plan, we're able to support that variance to the present development zone boundary. So it's a phased development. The proposed use would likely be classified as an assisted living facility, which would require a special use permit. So I would anticipate whenever the first phase final plat comes in, a special use permit would come in with specific site plan, design, and final design that we would analyze. But the general concept plan is, you know, looks like definitely something that we can work with. That being said, I'll make a recommendation first on agenda item five, and if you want to vote on that, and then I can make a recommendation on number seven.
Yeah. Can I call Colonel Folsom back up just for a couple of questions?
Yes, absolutely.
Just to clarify. First of all, thank you very much for the service to our country and for your commitment to what you're doing for the Wounded Warriors. Very noble. Appreciate it very much. It's great for the city. It's great for the Wounded Warriors. So thank you very much. But just a couple of points. Is this going to be open to males and females?
Yes.
Anybody, right?
Yes.
Anybody that served in...
Combat wounded.
Good, okay. And second of all, is there going to be medical facilities on premises at all?
No, not this phase.
This is all independent?
Here's what we anticipate. We've got to walk before we run. I need, if you've got any spare change, we'll take it. But we need another $8 million. That's just reality for the first phase. First phase, what we see, and I've got, again, I've got a great team with HDR, this will be, these will be pods. If you look at that middle thing, you'll see they're pods. And this is HDR idea that we have family units. So no one's going to be housed in a big building. They'll be separate little, but the buildings will be made for, what's the word I'm looking for, Colonel Haley? There'll be skilled care. So it'll be built to skilled care. So each pod, as we develop, because what we anticipate happening is traumatic brain injury does not get better as one gets older. We anticipate that time will come when many of these soldiers, if not all, will require skilled care. So my intent is to build out now to skilled care, but it'll be assisted living. As we go down the road with time, we're going to see more skilled care. In other words, what I'm looking at from a vision is that if somebody wants to come live with us, that individual will die there. That's going to be his home forever. He'll die in his home. So we're going to make every effort we can to keep people at home. And again, Mr. Volte's been, you know, he shares a vision, too. What I'm trying to get at with this location, what we want to do is be in the middle of, that's why I'm with Mr. Volte. I don't want any development to the east of us. If I can do it, I'm going to buy that land to the east of us or tie it up. It'll be, we're not going to have any industrial. We want to have soldiers who can go out on the veranda, watch the sunrise, watch the sunset, have a cigar, relax, and not have to look at any other thing except Nebraska countryside. But again, this is, and I really believe that once we get going, the American people will get behind this. And you'll see phase two, phase three. But again, to respect my neighbors, this will be, there's not going to be any high rises. There's going to be one-story buildings that will conform to the land, be part of the land, and something that everyone in Omaha will be proud to say that they, that we are the... the headquarters.
I just wanted to quickly answer your question. It'll start off as independent living in the first 20 or 24 that get admitted on a set of criteria and the national applications. But it has to then have facilities that can accommodate that progression to assisted living and then to skilled nursing that may require that special permit. I don't know if it will for Building One, but it may be for Building Two and Building Three. And they may not stay in Building One. They may get moved to a facility where the design is a little more extensive to support that deteriorating physical or mental circumstance that that particular person might have.
For transitional-
For transitional purposes. But we want to keep them there. Once they're admitted, they'll stay. That's the problem right now, and VA doesn't give that support.
Well, let me just final, just one last comment, and I apologize. But I just hope that this is a model that is successful and can be replicated across the country. I think there's a huge demand for it, and I thank you very much for-
Well, I appreciate that comment. You know, it's been said that imitation is a serious form of flattery. So we're hoping that we put something here in the middle of the country that, as you pointed out, will be emulated by all over, because the need's out there. The need is out there. And I, quite frankly, I'm surprised that nobody has come up with this until we did. And, yes, sir.
This is just for the soldiers, for the wounded warriors, that the families don't live there?
No. This, again, this is, imagine that your son has traumatic brain injury, and you're responsible for taking care of him. You feed him, you clothe him, you wipe his dirty butt, you do all these things, and you no longer can do that. His siblings can't take him on. The alternative is that he is going to have to be put into a regular assisted living center. So families, one of our phases will be a small, like a Ronald McDonald House, if you will, where families could come and stay on site for short periods of time. But no, this is going to be single soldiers whose parents can no longer, or might be a situation, and this happens, where a combat wounded veteran comes back and his wife ditches him. She says, "I'm out." It happens.
Can't handle it.
Can't handle it, so you're on your own, pal. So, but this is not going to be, this will be single soldiers.
What I think is interesting is, not that this is the end goal, but there's probably going to be some people moving to Omaha so their loved one can be in this facility and they get the best care, so they're closer to him or her, and it's just a kind of a benefit spinoff, I guess.
That might happen. But if you look at a map, you know, Omaha's easy to get to. And if you think about how we're moving around as Americans, you know, you might have a young man who grew up in Long Island, New York, but his sister lives in the Bay Area, brother lives in Phoenix, and somebody else lives somewhere else. But Omaha is that, if you think about the way we're configured geographically, being the center of the country, you can get anywhere from Omaha in six hours, at least on the continental United States. That's the beauty of this plan, is that we're essentially located where families can easily get to the loved ones regardless of where they used to live. So that's the beauty of the plan. But to your point, this is for single soldiers only.
Thank you.
That's a lot getting the money.
We'll get it.
I know.
All right, back to the city's recommendation for Agenda Item Number Five.
Yeah, just a quick note on the assisted living use. There's three different components within the code: independent housing, semi-independent housing, dependent living. An assisted living facility can be a combination of any or all of those three. So there can be a long, a wide range of services or types of people that are classified in assisted living. So, you know, if you think of other, the traditional assisted living, there, you know, there's a wide range of care, of medical care provided as well. And we'll have to work on those details with the applicant, you know, when they're ready to come back for the finalization. Specifically for Number Five, for the land use amendment, staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions or comments from the board?
Before we vote, I just want to also add my comments to the Colonel and his team that, as others have said, I commend you for your vision. I commend you for your service, of course, but also your wisdom to assemble the team that you've assembled. You have a team that can take this to whatever scope that you want, and I wish you the best success. And with that, I will vote approval.
Do I make a motion?
Yes.
Trenton made the motion. Do we have a second?
I agree.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, and Agenda Item Number Seven, may we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so for the rezoning, staff recommends approval of the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of a variance to the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. You could shorten that to just approval. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the 23 conditions listed in the recommendation report.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion for approving the rezoning from AG to R4. Approval of the variance to the present, the present development zone boundary of the urban development element of the city's master plan. Approval of the preliminary plat subject to the following of all the 23 conditions.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Agenda Item Number Eight, Case C10-05-064. The applicant is Mark Sanford, and the request is approval of a major amendment to the mixed use district development agreement for Torrey Square to allow multifamily residential. This was laid over from the May 1st, 2019 meeting. The location is 3833 North 153rd Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Good afternoon, Mark Sanford, 1306 North 162nd Street. I'm the architect for the project, which is a 27-unit apartment building. It is an allowable use in this mixed-use development area. We've spent, the reason it's been from May until now is I've spent considerable amount of time revising the elevations and also revising the landscaping plan. Some of the issues were the mitigation plan that was done initially when the mixed-use agreement was agreed upon over 10 years ago. And that vegetation grew up, and some of it did not survive. And Tim Fries indicated that we needed to find out what was in there. That area is very overgrown at this point, but I did spend a lot of time going back through the site and coming up with a new landscaping plan, which I submitted to the city, and also the elevations, which we had all the elevations taken care of. And the parking issue, we have the neighbor to the south who is the landowner, who is selling the northern part of this project. He has an office building. He has agreed that we can use some of his parking at night because the hours are offset, and he is willing to provide a letter to the city for that, to that effect. And we have spent a considerable amount of time, and my client has spent a lot of money having those plans generated. The mixed-use agreement is another piece that needs to be revised, and that is one of the conditions that the city has indicated. And I know that they're recommending layover. But the client would really like to get the approval for this major amendment so that they know that the money that's being spent on changing the mixed-use agreement is well-spent. And they, that would also be with Gene Graves, who's the landowner, and my client, who is Kevin Cavann, is currently seeking this approval. With those conditions, I'd like to ask for the approval of the board on those recommendations from the city that we will comply with those issues and before a building permit will be released.
Just for a point of clarification, you might have been looking at last month, or the previous report for layover, and we do have a recommendation for approval. We'll get through the public hearing, and I can talk about that.
Okay. Now, so I did have a nodding. So how'd you like that? That was good. Any questions?
Thank you. Any other proponents who wish to speak? Okay, are there any opponents who wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. May we hear from the city, please?
Okay, yeah, Mark kind of touched on most of the items that I was going to discuss in the plan. We're finalizing a few details of the tree mitigation plan that goes back 10 or 12 years. Yeah, we're looking for, you know, some type of letter of response or approval or lease with the adjacent applicant, or the adjacent property owner, I should say, for those two additional stalls that are needed. And then there's some final refinements needed for the building elevations. But we are comfortable with those items getting wrapped up between Planning Board and City Council, and staff is recommending approval of the major amendment to the Torrey Square mixed-use development agreement, subject to the applicant providing the necessary signed agreements prior to council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
I will move approval of the major amendment to the Torrey Square mixed-use development agreement, subject to the applicant providing five acceptable signed agreements and associated exhibits, as discussed above, in the recommendations above forwarding to City Council.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Lisa, will you please call the vote?
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Agenda Item Number Nine, Case C10-96-261. The applicant is Ted Grace. The request is approval of a major amendment to the mixed-use district development agreement for Altech Business Park, laid over from our July 3, 2019 meeting. The location is northwest of 144th and F Streets. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hi, Jessica Thomas, 10250, here on behalf of the applicant. We're here today asking for an amendment to the mixed-use agreement. We have worked with the city since the last meeting where there was a layover, and we have reviewed the city's comments to this request, and we are okay with all their requests. So if there are any questions, we have the engineer as well as the developer here to answer anything.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, so if you remember last month, there were two different cases that we're dealing with, the Altech Business Park. This just addresses one of those items. The previous rezoning is not back on the agenda, and we discussed with the development or the applicant, the development team and the applicant about that moving forward. So I would anticipate seeing that at a future time. So this major amendment specifically deals with one lot. It adds a couple of uses that are allowed, custom manufacturing, light industrial, and warehousing distribution limited. It also modifies the parking requirement that was rather restrictive with the original agreement at one parking stall per 200 square feet of building. That number is more restrictive than almost any other use in the zoning code, and based on the submitted traffic analysis, you know, with the submittal, staff is comfortable with removing that and just designating the specific parking requirements for the use types that go into the building, as is customary. That being said, staff recommends approval of the major amendment to the Altech Business Park, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed agreements prior to forwarding to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion approved, major amendment, the Altech Business Park mixed-use development agreement, subject to submittal of five acceptable signed agreements prior to forwarding to City Council.
Second.
Lisa, we have a motion in a second. Will you please call the vote?
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Moving on to Agenda Item Number 11, Case C3-19-161, C10-19-140. The applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is conversion of Douglas County zoning districts AG, R1, and RR2 to City of Omaha zoning districts AG, R1, and DR, along with approval of an amendment to the future land use element of the city's master plan for the expanded three-mile extraterritorial jurisdiction. The location is Omaha and the three-mile extraterritorial zoning jurisdiction. May we hear from the applicant, please?
So I will take this one. This zoning conversion from Douglas County zoning to City of Omaha zoning, as well as a changed or an amendment to the future land use map, is a result of the recent annexation, the 2019 annexation package that was approved by City Council last month and was effective July 31st. As a result of that, as a result of that annexation, the city's jurisdiction expanded approximately 133 acres in the southwest portion, near 228th and Q. The zoning jurisdiction is a three-mile limit from any city limits unless it abuts another jurisdiction that already had a zoning jurisdiction. Therefore, we need to convert the zoning from Douglas County zoning to City of Omaha zoning. We try to match up as comparable as possible. Sometimes there are some modifications, but any existing homes or improvements are already in place. The future land use map would also change a small portion to low-density residential, as well as a larger portion, which is Elkhorn Special Development. I can make our official recommendation after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents? Hearing none, we'll close the public hearing. May we hear from the city, please?
Recommend approval.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Motion to approve.
Lisa, we have a motion in a second. Will you please call the vote?
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Okay, on to Agenda Item Number 12, which we will take with Agenda Item Number 20. Number 12 is Case C3-19-139. The applicant is the Planning Department on behalf of the City of Omaha. The request is approval of the Furniture Row Tiff redevelopment project plan, and the location is 119 North 72nd Street. Case number 20, I'm sorry, Agenda Item Number 20 is Case Number C7-19-150. C11-19-151, the applicant is J Development, and the request is approval of a PUR planned unit redevelopment overlay district, along with approval of a conditional use permit to allow multiple-family residential in a GC district. The location is 119 North 72nd Street. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Hello, Randy Kuchak, 14710 West Dodge Road. I'm the civil engineer representing J Development, the applicant for this project. This project is a multifamily residential project utilizing an existing building at 119 North 72nd Street, just north of the intersection of 72nd and Dodge. As you can see pictured here, the subject property is located about 400 feet north of the intersection. There's a couple of existing driveway cuts, one on the adjacent property to the south and one at the existing building. The existing building is a former retail store, furniture store. It has sat vacant for several years and had several redevelopment items come forward, but nothing's really come through. Based upon the location of this project, the developer's looking to put together a podium-style apartment building utilizing the existing building to provide parking. It's a pretty ingenuative concept to utilize this building as a parking garage. And so, as you can see, that existing building is a one-story building, has a basement underneath. It's close to 72nd Street right away. As you can see in the staff comments, the building is actually into the 72nd Street right away. With this, we'll be putting together a right-of-way lease for the building after working with staff, seeing that that was the path forward to utilize that existing building, which is needed. And we'll take some of this existing overhead power, bury that underground to kind of clear out this corridor, and close off the existing curb cut that is on the subject property, and utilize the existing access easement that is in favor of our lot, currently listed as Capitol Court, to treat that more as a, as a street, per se, to kind of close up that curb cut, make that area a little bit better from an access point, and get that traffic into a single spot. Here's a site plan showing the first level and kind of that entrance to the parking that would be within the project site. The project will have 159 units, potentially 158. Still looking at some community amenity space that could be converted to a unit versus not. The PUR application and waivers requested indicate the 159 units that I mentioned. So access for the project site would be on the adjacent property within the easement and would carry up Capitol Court to the primary parking location, which is the existing building. building. Enter into that building, first-level parking, a ramp internal to the existing building, and there would be a second lower level of parking. The podium for the -- that would act as the podium for this project. The units would come up at the front face, the south and east faces of that building, set halfway, halfway off of the existing building, so we would work with the existing structure, and come up four stories above the additional for a total of five stories. 128 studio units, 31 or 30 one-bedroom units would be the unit mix. We've asked for several waivers with this project. Many of them are related to the existing GC zoning that exists for the existing building. It's set with a minimal setback, basically zero setback, to the adjacent property and along 72nd Street. When utilizing that building for a multifamily residential, we have to have a conditional use permit, which requires us to drop into R8 zoning criteria. So we're utilizing the PUR to try and take care of those waivers, which exist on several setbacks. As you can -- on the list, we also have impervious coverage and building coverage waivers that we're asking for. This project will add green to the existing site compared to what is out there. The entire site's paved currently. We'll get some landscaping back into the site to make that better. We'll also address the 72nd Street frontage by pulling the sidewalk off, by getting rid of the existing retaining wall that exists in that corridor that pushes pedestrians to 72nd Street. We'll pull that back to try and get a little bit of green space in that area and generally improve the site. We also have some sign waivers that we've listed that are shown in the elevations. I know staff had some comments there. We'll work with staff to make sure that we follow with what those recommendations listed. And so with that, we also have a parking waiver. The site is obviously a pretty tight site. We are working with what we can to get surface parking. We've shown five stalls on the access drive that will act as pseudo-on-street parking, however it is in private property, along Capitol Court. But the majority of the parking will be inside of the existing building. So 127 -- 122 stalls interior to the garage, and then five stalls that would act as on-street parking but would be private to the development. With that, we'd provide sidewalk along Capitol Court to make that more of a street presence, and dropping the overhead lines would make that corridor seem more inviting. With that said, I'll be available for questions. I'll pass it on to the developer.
One second. So how many curb cuts? Is this one right in, right out onto 72nd?
Yes, yep. Access is right in, right out.
There's no one to the north either?
Nope.
So what is the length of term that you have negotiated that easement for? Or, I mean, if that goes away, you're in trouble, so...
Currently, there's no expiration on the access easement that was granted. It's been granted to that property as part of our title commitment. When we looked at this property, that access easement was granted to adjacent properties.
Okay.
Several other businesses utilize that Capitol Court. Several of the fast-food restaurants and other businesses further up the line carry along that Capitol Court.
Okay.
I don't believe it's completely pictured here, but as you can see, all of them access that, as well as another residential development to the east.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Julie Stavnek with J. Development Company, 2430 South 73rd Street, Suite 200, Omaha, Nebraska, 68124. And I've got my colleague, Ryan Spelman, here as well, our architect, Joa Buzzard, from Harlem Basham. So, yeah, thank you for considering not only the TIF application, but also our waivers that we need. And we're excited about the redevelopment. We just bought the building last week, so I'm here to ask or answer any questions that you may have. So thank you.
Thank you.
Julie, are you -- do you anticipate catering mostly to UNO students?
Yeah, you know, our breakup is studios and one-bedroom.
Yeah.
So we're anticipating that, but in addition to a lot of what I'm going to say workforce housing as well, folks that are at Target and working at the Med Center, as well as Creighton's Med Center and children's hospitals. So I think there's a lot of place, but it'll be a combination of students, young professionals.
And what do you -- just out of curiosity, what are these efficiency units? What do you anticipate renting them for?
They -- our rents range around $795 to $850 for the efficiencies.
How much is that per square foot? Is that like a dollar?
It's about a dollar eighty.
How much is the bus rapid transit and being on that corridor? How important is that to this project?
It's extremely important to us, and that's why we feel very comfortable with our parking ratio. We're excited about the orbit starting construction.
Thank you for not building a gas station.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning. I'd just like to add a couple of things. I don't know if I missed it, but the total project cost is $17,760,000. So it's a very large building and a big investment in the area, and they're requesting $2,861,000 in TIF support. And I'm talking to address just item 12 on the agenda, the TIF, not the PUR application, although that's essential to the project as well. It meets all the criteria the project does for our TIF program. It's been reviewed by the city's TIF committee, and it comes to you with their endorsement. It's also been reviewed by the city's urban design staff, and the materials and design of the building are very well-received. It's an attractive-looking building. It should fit in very well. It's an appropriate land use for the area, and it complies with the city's master plan, particularly with the orbit rapid bus transit system that we're trying to -- that we are developing along Dodge. So we have the department ask for your approval.
Thank you. Any other proponents?
Martin Pelter, Crookley Hawk Law Firm, 2120 South 72nd Street, Suite Number 1200. I am here representing 552 Corporation, which owns the property directly to the south of the proposed project. The easement that was discussed and on which, I guess, the Capitol Street is located runs on our client's property, and it is -- it's an easement that was granted back in the '40s. There are no provisions in the easement with respect to maintenance or anything like that. We're not here to object to the project, but we would like to see a condition placed on moving forward, that there be some agreement with respect to maintenance of the property -- or, I'm sorry, maintenance of the easement. At the moment, there's no -- there are no provisions for maintenance or the future of the easement. So we think it's important from an access standpoint and from the standpoint of the properties that use that easement, that there be some agreement in place with respect to maintenance. And that's -- we would like to see that as a condition on the application.
Martin, who takes care of that now?
At the moment, I don't know exactly. The easement is located on our property. I know we don't have the information right now as far as who is doing the maintenance or like the snow removal, things of that nature. We need to -- those are things that we need to follow up on and sortify.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents? Any opponents who wish to speak? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Do you have a comment?
Clarify that, you know, that Capitol Court and the easement and how that all works, and I'm thinking specifically about this maintenance issue, is the subject property, has it received an easement for the use of that when that was put in? Is this all set up?
So the subject property was -- it looks like Randy will come up here in a minute, maybe, to add some clarification to whatever I'm about to say here. But the subject site was actually platted last year under a different applicant with the intentions of tearing down the building and rebuilding a new building. So my familiarity with the easement to Capitol Court is only related specifically to that plat, and we do have a copy of the plat if we need to bring it down.
I remember.
But there's not a lot of information on that. The document basically just states it. You know, specifically regarding the request for maintenance, I don't believe that would be in the purview of what we're looking at today. Now, we could definitely encourage the applicant and the adjacent property owner to coordinate and discuss that, but this isn't a plat before us today. It's already a platted lot, so I would think that would not be appropriate, you know, without any additional information that I have at this time.
Could I bring Julie back up?
Yes. Julie, would you?
Hi, Julie. Just looking at the sources and uses for the TIF here, and it shows $1,776 in owner equity and additional $209,000 of additional owner equity. What's the $1,776 and what's the $209,000?
To be specific, part of it is the developer. So J. Development is acting as developer, owner, investor, as well as we will be the property management of the firm. So the difference between the two is one is our personal investment, and the other is we're bringing in an investor with the additional capital.
Okay. That's funny. Thank you.
Randy, did you have something that you wanted to add? It seemed like you had a comment you wanted to make.
Basically, just to reiterate, that we had done a title commitment and looked at the property to the south to verify those access easements. As was mentioned, those were back from the '40s. There's a lot of access easements in that area, but that was a provision that we had looked at in our due diligence for the property to look at what those access easements were as we'd worked with staff, and it made sense to get rid of the current curb cut and utilize that.
So to clarify, then, so your property, or the subject property, has access easement onto that Capitol Court? That's what you're saying, basically?
Yes, yes.
And no further description of how it would ever be maintained or anything like that?
That is correct.
Okay.
And without that easement, you have no?
Access.
Access to your property?
Yes. If the curb cut is closed, there would be no access to the property.
Okay. All right, thank you. May we hear from the city, please?
Yeah, I can't say that our predecessors did a great job of setting up this block and the street grid throughout this area. It's definitely challenging anytime somebody comes in for redevelopment, and so we do our best. We put our best foot forward to try to bring it into as much compliance as possible. City staff is very excited about this project. We've had other interests in this property that would not utilize the best potential for this site, and we believe that this project is a great example of bringing density to a very important core to our city. You know, we have the potential redevelopment across roads to the west. We have the orbit system, which is, if you notice the press release, construction on those stations will begin this month, so a lot of excitement. And based on the proximity of the orbit system and that station and what we are trying to achieve with densification and looking at implementing transit-oriented development regulations that support that new transit option, we are supportive of the project, the waivers that are including, as well as, you know, which includes the parking, setbacks of the building, site area per unit, and others. There is one waiver that was mentioned by the development team that staff does not support regarding a sign above -- projecting sign above the parapet, but we believe that we can work with the applicant with slight modifications to bring that into compliance. So Don touched on the TIF component. Just seeing if there's anything else that I need to mention. So unless there's any other questions, we'll start with number 12, with the recommendation of approval.
Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
Motion for approval?
We have a motion and a second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote? Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. And for agenda item number 20, please.
Staff recommends approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily in the GC district, subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the PUR overlay district, subject to submittal of final acceptable plans prior to forwarding this request to City Council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board? Do we have a motion?
A motion for approval of the conditional use permit to allow multifamily residential in GC district, subject to the seven conditions in the recommendation report, and approval of the PUR overlay district, subject to submittal of final acceptable plans prior to forwarding this request to the City Council.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote? Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
Yes.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. Okay, thank you. Thank you. All right, we still have some minutes to approve. Do I have a motion for the pre-meeting minutes from July 3rd, 2019's meeting?
Motion approved, July 3rd.
Count -- or meeting minutes.
Pre-meeting.
Pre-meeting.
Time pre-meeting, yeah.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote? Moore?
Yes.
Morris?
Upstate.
Magid?
Upstate.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved, four to O. And for the minutes from the July 3rd, 2019 meeting?
Motion for the minutes.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote? Morris?
Upstate.
Magid?
Upstate.
Rosacker?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Ms. Carnes?
Yes.
Motion approved. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
We have a motion and a second, Lisa. Will you please call the vote? Morris?
Yes.
Magid?
No.
Moore?
Yes.
Pate?
Yes.